Hey folks, can I have your attention please? Coach Rasler and Coach Marsh, could you come forward please? Come on forward, girls. Good evening, folks. I'm going to be presenting two awards tonight. One to the Abington Township Girls Varsity Basketball Team, and to the Abington Township Boys Varsity Basketball Team. This is the second year in a row that these two teams came before the Board of Commissioners. The Abington Township Basketball Girls Team completed another successful season as one of the elite programs in Pennsylvania. Quarterfinal round state playoff game, the Ghosts fell to Upper Dublin 41 to 31. Abington Girls Basketball ended the season with a 24 to 5 record, while earning the honors of SOL American Conference Champions, Suburban One League Tournament Champions, District One Semifinalists, and PIAA Playoff Quarterfinalists. The highlights of Coach Marsh's class of 2019 seniors are as follows: Four consecutive 20-win seasons: 20 in 2016, 23 in 2017, 22 in 2018, and 24 in 2019. Four straight PIAA Playoff appearances with five wins in the state tournament. Two Suburban One League titles: National in 2018, and American in 2019. 2017 District One Champions, an overall record of 89-27. The season featured great individual performances. Senior Cassandra Brown climbed off the all-time leading scorer list. The Rhode Island recruit ends her Abington career with 14.37 points, which is second most of all to DJ Rawls' class of 2015. Other seniors on the team... Let's pronounce anybody's name. Cameron Laijone, Miranda Leetag, Tammy Wessel will also continue their academic and athletic pursuits at the collegiate level. Congratulations to head coach Dan Marsh, and Coach Rasler and his staff on their continued excellence. And the citation reads, "Abington Township Board of Commissioners congratulates you and your leadership, efforts, and hard work. The season ended with a 24 to 5 record, while earning the honors of Suburban One League, American Conference Champions, Suburban One League Tournament Champions, District One Semifinalists, and PIAA Playoff Quarterfinalists." Congratulations, young ladies. Thank you for having us. We appreciate it. We were 26 and 5, though. Congratulations, ladies. Hey Coach Rasley, and you guys come forward. Fellas, come on up. Again, folks, this is the second year in a row the senior boys team has been presented with a citation from the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. "The Abington Boys Basketball Team completed another successful season as one of the premier programs in Pennsylvania. Second-round state playoff game, the Ghosts fell to Pembroke 55 to 51. Abington Boys Basketball ended the season with a 28 and 2 record, while earning the honors of SOL American Conference Champions, Suburban One Tournament Champions, District One Champions, and PIAA Playoff Quarterfinalists. Coach Charles Rasley raised the program to a level of unmatched excellence with this banner group of the Class of 2019. The team has won 51 consecutive Suburban One League games with an overall record of 55 and 1 since 2015. The group captured four straight SOL Conference Championships and twice won the SOL Tournament. The three-peat of District One Championships has only been accomplished by one other school. That was Chester the years 2002, 2008. In the last 50 years, this senior group ends with a career record of 95 and 19. The season featured great individual performances. Senior Ford Eric Dixon became the first Galloping Ghost to score over 2,000 points in the school's history. Eric also went over 1,000 rebounds in his career. In the 2018-19 season, Eric also broke his own school record for most points in a single season with 838. The Villanova recruit ends Abington career with 22,454 points and 1,012 rebounds." That's fantastic. Lucas Monroe closed out his career with 1,123 points, seventh all-time in school history, and finished second on the program's all-time assist chart with 453. Lucas will continue his academic and athletic career at the University of Pennsylvania. And folks, I only missed one game. That's because I had to be here at the Commissioners Meeting. But my wife was texting me the whole time I was here, so I was there in spirit. So, on behalf of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners, Abington Township Board of Commissioners congratulates you on your leadership, effort, and hard work. The season ended with a 28 and 2 record, while earning the honors of Suburban One League, American Conference Champions, Suburban One League Tournament Champions, District One Champions, and PIAA Playoff Qualifiers. Congratulations, coaches and gentlemen.
Thank you very much for having us. We are just proud to say that we love to be a part of the Abington Township and the Abington community.
Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners Meeting for Thursday, April 11, 2019. And we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Meyer, here.
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 Here. Before I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I have an announcement from Commissioner Michael Thompson.
This past weekend, the HL Fire Company lost a dedicated lifetime member, Bill Eading, served the company for 61 long and respectful years. He was a part of the community, he was a part of the company's success, and I would like to express my condolences to the family and to the fire company for his big loss. Please join us in observing a moment of silence in Mr. Eading's memory.
Okay, everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and followed by a moment of silence. Thank you. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with good reason and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I have three announcements to make. The first is, an executive session was held earlier this evening on a personnel matter. Second, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day Observance. And the Arbor Day Observance in Abington Township proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the trees and other natural resources of Abington Township are fundamental elements in the vitality of our community, and whereas the urban forests of Abington Township provides us with immeasurable environmental, human health, economic, educational, family, and social benefits, and whereas in the month of April, an annual celebration of Arbor Day is held in Abington Township as part of the National Observance and as a project of our Shade Tree Commission and our Environmental Advisory Council, and whereas all the people of Abington are invited to participate in our 2019 Celebration of Tree Planting at Dennis Doherty Memorial Park in Abington, Pennsylvania on April 27 from 10 a.m. until noon. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Abington Township Board of Commissioners that April 27, 2019, is designated Arbor Day. The Board issues this proclamation calling upon the people of Abington Township to observe the day by joining our celebration and by continuing to enhance the environment by planting trees in our community. Approve this 11th day of April 2019, the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. And I want to ask one question before I move on to the next item. Where exactly is Dennis Doherty Memorial Park for those who may want to participate?
It's North Hills.
In North Hills?
Yeah, Central Avenue, North Hills.
Okay. Does everyone have that? Okay. Thank you. And my last public announcement is that presidential comment will be that because there were no committee meetings in the month of April, a public comment will be allowed after each committee item as a result, as I said, of no committee meetings during the month of April. That concludes the presidential announcements. And at this time, we're going to have a presentation, so I'd like to call on Commissioner John Spiegelman and the Abington Educational Foundation.
Thank you very much, President Luker. I would like to welcome our friends from the Abington Educational Foundation to come up and introduce themselves and give us a presentation on the status of their excellent and tireless mission. And welcome.
Thank you. My name is Daniel Kay. I'm on the board of the Abington Educational Foundation. And I really appreciate you allowing us to come and show you some of what we've been doing for the years and how we're hoping to make Abington an even better place.
Hello, everyone. I'm Erin Zimmerman. I'm the Executive Director of AEF. And thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman, and all the Commissioners for allowing us to speak with you for just a few moments tonight about AEF and the work that we're doing with the school district. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Christine Strange. I'm the Chair of the Abington Educational Foundation. Or as you've heard, AEF is how we fondly refer to it. We are a 23-member, all-volunteer board of parents, alumni, business owners in the community, as well as Erin, who is our first staff person, who has now been with us officially two years. So we're very excited about that. And we only have a couple slides. We're not going to PowerPoint you to death, I promise, because I hate it. So the mission is very simple. Our goal is to enhance the educational experience of all 8,300 students in the Abington School District. We are part of a larger movement across the country of educational foundations, where we're starting to see a lot more collaboration in public-private partnerships. And it's not just the money part, so I don't want anybody to think that. It's bringing in business owners and bringing back alumni and specific focused areas that the kids have shown interest in, whether it's science, or math, or arts. We want to bring that back to the community and to the students who are really engaged by it. Over the past three years, the Abington Educational Foundation has contributed over $100,000 to the school district to offset innovative programs and technology. We're very fortunate that we have a strong school district here, but there's always things that are outside of the budget. And this gives the teachers the ability to bring in new and innovative ideas that might not be in the district's rules, we'll say. So, we don't have to follow them. We're completely independent of them. We work in conjunction with them. But it gives the teachers a platform to come to us and ask for things. And it's been really exciting, because there's been some innovative learning grants, where it started with one classroom. And what we found was, it was one kindergarten classroom in one elementary school. And we said, "Well, if one needs it, all seven probably need it, or all four probably need it." And we went back to all of those teachers at that grade level and said, "Can we help all of you?" And they were super excited by the opportunity. So that's one of the ways that we impact, is our learning grants program, our signature programs, and then what we call major opportunities. This is just a quick snapshot of some of our learning grants. It is not all technology. The Board will tell you when we talk about technology. It makes me a little bit antsy, because I like to do things beyond technology. So, we've done book clubs. We've done dramatic play in classrooms. Art, music enrichment, language. We're actually kicked off a reading program this year. So we're really excited about some of the non-technology things in conjunction with the technology. And these are some of the students. The heart that you see on the left was actually created with the 3D printer that the AEF funded for the senior high, which I think is pretty cool. We have three signature programs. Our first one's the Silver Pen Award, which is for our sixth-grade students. So that impacts the students at the elementary level. It's to get them excited about writing, and writing about something that they want to write about. All of the sixth-grade elementary schools participate in it. And then there are students selected in each elementary. At least one boy and one girl. Some schools have two boys and two girls. And they get honored at a school board meeting, actually, coming up in May. Is that right? Yeah. The second one is our Abington Buddies Club. I will tell you, it is one of the most well-known and popular clubs at the senior high school. It creates relationships between our general education students and our special education students. They get together once a month, and they do really fun things. They go on field trips. They make scarecrows in the fall. And they kept coming back to us for learning grants. And we finally said, "How about we put you in our budget? Stop asking us every year. We want to make you guys something that can be sustainable year after year." So that's the senior high. Our newest program is at the junior high level. We created an award last year, which was more of a character award. There's lots and lots of awards in the seventh, eighth, and ninth grade awards assemblies at the end of the year. And this one's for character. It's for showing integrity, leadership, kindness. And academics are part of it, but not all of it. We were able to honor 26 students last year at the seventh, eighth, and ninth grade levels at their end-of-year awards assemblies. And these are just some students. That quote is actually from a student who received it. So we're pretty excited, and we're going to continue that again this year. Future impact. So, these are some things that we have identified with the district that we're really looking forward to working with them on over the next one, two, three, five years, because all of these things are evolving. We really want to be able to help the teachers to bring new and innovative things to the classroom, to be able to actually break through to every student in their classroom, regardless of where their learning level is. And you can read these, and they're all different based on the different levels of the buildings: elementary, senior high, junior high. Virtual reality learning experiences is actually a K through 12 opportunity. So we're hoping to really bring that into every building. And we work closely with the teachers on our learning grants. We want them to bring more and more things to us. We want to help them to help the students achieve. And we know that not every student achieves the same way. So, that's part of the exciting part for us. The last thing I will say is, our ask of the community: Volunteer. Get involved. We have several committees. Obviously, we have a board like you guys. If you know somebody who's looking for something to do in the community, send them our way. We would love to have them. We have events all throughout the year. We'd love to see more community members and Commissioners at those events as well. Serve as an alumni ambassador. One thing that we have learned is that people who grew up in Abington love Abington, and they don't leave. But we're really trying to expand our alumni program, so we would love to get more alumni engaged. So if you know one, or you live next door to one, or you might be married to one, in my case, please send them our way, because we'd love to figure out how to integrate them and their classes and hear more about what their experience was when they were at Abington. Follow us on Facebook, please. We like to get the likes and the social media posts up, because it helps us. And then there's always ways to give. Be a sponsor in event, United Way, Workplace Giving. There's tons of things that the community and our business owners are doing for us, which we're so appreciative of. And that's it. So, thank you for the time. We appreciate the opportunity, and we look forward to working with you guys more closely in the future.
Could you wait one second?
Thank you so much, Erin.
Are there any questions? So many Commissioners?
Oh, sorry. I should have asked.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you so much to Erin and Daniel, of course, to Chris, for that great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Christine. Okay, at this time, we'll move on and call on Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes and for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Luker. The consent agenda tonight deals with just the minutes and Finance Committee agenda items, as the Finance Committee meeting did occur in the third week in March. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through F as listed on the agenda, and I assume of...
Second. The motion has been moved to second it. Any comments from Commissioners and staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
That completes the consent agenda item.
Thank you, Vice President Stephen Klein. There is no unfinished business, so we'll move right into new business. And I'd like to call on Commissioner Drew Roth and the Chair of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. We have one item on the Public Works Committee agenda this evening. Are we doing a public comment before the vote?
No.
After the vote. Okay.
Now, after the agenda item is motioned.
After the agenda items. Okay. Yep, thanks. PW 01041119 is a motion to award the lowest responsible bidders and authorize the township manager to execute contracts with the following companies for the purchase of material as shown: Cheyung Supply Corp., signpost material items #1 through #13; Garden State Highway Products Inc., signpost material items #14 through #24; Garden State Highway Products Inc., aluminum blanks complete; 1/8 inch EcoStraight blanks complete; 1/4 inch EcoStraight blanks complete; reflective roll goods type 3 complete; reflective sheeting and sign faces, finished signs type 3 complete; reflective sheeting and sign faces type 3 complete; hot tape pavement markings complete; and miscellaneous items complete. And I assume of...
It's been moved to second it. Comments from Commissioners or staff? Any from residents? If there are none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
That's the end of the agenda for Public Works.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. At this time, we'll move to administrative code and land use and call on Commissioner Kenneth Broski, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we have two items on the agenda, the first being ACL-01-041119. This is a motion to approve Resolution #19-013, authorizing the township manager to execute all documents related to the reimbursement agreement, R18060035, regarding the Abington Trail. And I assume of...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Thompson?
Just a point of clarification. I think page 2 of 38, within the packet, discusses shadows and signage on Maple Avenue and Spear Avenue and Jason Avenue. And I believe Jason is Speed Jackson Avenue? Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Rehe?
What exactly are we doing here?
Tim, you want to announce your position with the Township, please?
Tim Clark, Assistant Director of Engineering. The... This is authorizing Mr. Manfredi to sign for the balance of the grant as it's outlined. Oh, it's... The project itself is going from Crestmont Station over Rubicam, meandering, eventually winding up at the Ardsley Train Station. It's...
Any other comments? Commissioner Klein?
So, this was a... This was part of the... This was part of our Master Bike Plan and was identified as one of the easiest routes for us to implement after the Master Bike Plan was adopted and quickly was filed for a grant with the consultant, which was Simone Collins. We submitted a TAP grant application for this section, and we were awarded it through the state funding, through the state pool to fund this portion of the bike, of the Master Bike Plan. So, and then subsequently, we went after some of the money that we're looking at for the Greenwood, Washington Lane to the Penny Pack Park. It's also part of the implementation of the Master Bike Plan, but through separate funding.
So, is this leg of the project complete now?
No. What... Well, most likely, back in front of the Board in May or June. We have just received change orders and alternate, additional work authorizations to do approximately $10,000 or more, that's what we don't know, of additional work to get this project done. This is a procedural requirement to approve this, but we haven't reviewed everything. We just got them in, and we're probably coming back to you, because the consultant that was just mentioned, Simone Collins, and the engineer believe there's going to be additional work that has to be done for Mr. Clark to follow. And we don't have those details yet. So this is step one, procedural, moving forward and approving to go forward with the grant. And then there's pieces to this project that are described in here that talk about the plan still having to be developed. And I think it's the second recital, whereas the plan may require the preparation of additional planning documents to ensure implementation, et cetera. That's additional work that has to be reviewed, which we haven't received everything. We just received some of the additional work. Is that correct?
Correct.
I think the bike plan was approved before I sat on the Board. I'm not familiar with it. If that could be sent to me for my review, I'd appreciate it.
I'm in a similar boat with you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions from Commissioners? Thank you. With Tim Clark.
Thank you. Okay.
Comments from staff?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Ken, you have a question?
No, we're good. We're good.
You're good?
Yep.
All right. Comments from residents?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. Do the residents on the path already know that this is going through? Where it's planned to go through?
When you say the residents...
Well, this is from Crestmont, Rubicam, ending in Ardsley. So that particular trail. Have the residents who are along that trail been notified that there would be a bike trail there?
Again, I'll ask, Tim, has... Any notification going out to the residents?
Not as far as I know. Everything's up. We're still waiting for final plans.
But the Master Bike Plan was fully vetted publicly. There were, I want to say somewhere in the neighborhood of six... There were, I want to say somewhere in the neighborhood of six to seven meetings related to the bike plan.
Seven.
And then there was adoption of the bike plan, and this was all part of the bike plan, so...
But I'm wondering if you think that...
Your question's been answered.
I'm wondering if you think therefore that the people along that trail all know, since there was such a limited number of people that came to these meetings out of 56,000 people. So, I'm wondering if there is a plan to notify the people who would be in front of or behind a bike trail.
I'll let the department determine whether that's... Township Manager Manfredi.
Yes, President Luker. We are currently working on public notification plans specifically related to wastewater, where if they go out looking at manhole covers or pipes or anything, where there will be public notifications should we be going on any private property or going behind houses so that there is notification and people are wearing the appropriate identification. It's a guidance document that we're working on right now, primarily with George Wrigley, the Director of Wastewater. So, we are putting those things in place for the future.
Thank you. Okay?
I'm not sure how that, does that relate to the bike?
I think it answers the question.
But that was about wastewater, right? That was about wastewater and manhole covers on private...
I believe what I said was we're currently working on wastewater, but we're going to be doing this anytime we enter upon private property.
Okay. So, the bike trail would or would not, I would think it would not enter on private property, but you would find your private property now abutting a bike trail. Okay? So, my guess would be you're not on private property or you wouldn't have drawn the trail there, but if you're going behind my house, my house would now have a bike trail behind it, and I'm wondering if I should know that. So, I will hope to find out more about that later. I don't want to belabor it. Thank you for the answers, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we move on to Agenda Item B, which is ACL-02-041119. This is to consider awarding the preparation of the Abington Township Comprehensive Stormwater Management Plan to Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions Incorporated of Blue Bell, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $146,300, and I assume move.
Second.
It's been moved to second it. Any comments from commissioners?
Can we get a...
Vice President Klein?
I'm sorry. Could you give us a little background on this one?
As you know, in the budget for this year, the overarching stormwater study of the entire township was a high priority. We budgeted $150,000 to perform this. Ms. Montgomery will go through the steps that we've taken, what we've looked at, and I believe everyone received the specifications as to, and saw the proposals, but nonetheless, we'll run through that very briefly. But this is to comply with the goal of the Board of Commissioners to do a township-wide stormwater. This is separate from what you'll be seeing next month with respect to Ardsley and then perhaps in June or July or later on Wee Chief, those specific areas. This is township-wide.
Amy, before you, are you going to make a comment?
If you would like me to.
Well, I don't think it's necessary unless you need further information, because I was just going to ask you to identify yourself and your position. Are you satisfied with the answer that Township Manager gave you?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Vice President Klein?
I'd have a question. So, the scope of this is primarily dealing with public lands and right of ways, is that, or are we looking...
Amy Montgomery, Director of Engineering and Code. It is not necessarily, necessarily limited to public lands. We are going to be focusing initially on, we'll have three focus areas that we'll be looking at, that staff will be working with the selected consultant, and we will be taking a look at these three first areas to identify projects that could be then budgeted for the 2020 budget. And then after that step, we'll be looking beyond that for basically a 10-year plan.
There will also be public engagement throughout the process, and we will be looking at private as well as, as public. It really depends on, on the watersheds and how the water flows, as I'm sure you know.
And there will also be some tie-in with our MS4, so it won't be independent from our other studies or even from work that we're doing with our park and rec areas.
I guess my only caution is some of the stuff that we've done in the past where we've solved individual or a couple of houses with private systems, and I don't want to get back involved in that again and the liability issues that the township has had to deal with.
That will not happen.
Or not had to deal with, but potentially had to deal with.
The only time we would do that is if the analysis required us to get an easement to Guana property, which would be legally obtained. Other than that, no, that's not the intention. And we time this, it's just important to note in this design, so that even though they will, this will extend out beyond this year and into next year, so that we will have enough information if there are projects that we need to put into next year's budget, we can do so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Any other comments from commissioners? Staff or from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And, Mr. President, that concludes the business of the Administrative Code and Land Use Committee for this evening, and I appreciate your courtesy, and I hand this back to you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. We have two items this evening on our agenda. PS1 is a motion to approve the Honorable Discharge and Service Connected Disability Pension for Employee 3603, and I assume move.
Second.
It's been moved to second it. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And PS2 is a motion to accept the three-year proposal from Professional Health Services for NFPA 1582 compliant firefighter physicals at an annual cost per exam of $346.44, and I assume move.
Second.
It's been moved to second it. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, Public Affairs Committee, Commissioner John Spiegelman, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The first of the three public affairs items tonight is PA-01-041119. It's a motion to approve Resolution 19-014, the disposition of parks and recreation records according to township policy, and I assume move.
It's been moved to second it. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? Any from residents? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Our second item tonight is PA-01-041119. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 19-017, authorizing the submission of a grant application for the 2019 round of the Monco 2040 Implementation Grant Program for the Eastern Road Streetscape Project, and I assume move.
Second.
It's been moved to second it. Comments from commissioners? Staff? And/or residents? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And our final item tonight is item PA-03-041119. This is a motion to approve an extension of the agreement by and between the Department of Community and Economic Development for the Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant, which supports Phase 1 of the Old York Road-Susquehanna Road project until June 30, 2020, and authorizing the engineering design for the intersection improvements and demolition of properties, and I assume move.
It's been moved to second it. Any comments from commissioners?
Can we get an explanation of this and where we stand with this whole thing?
Certainly.
Tara, you want to announce your name and position with the township, please?
President Luker is Assistant Township Manager, Waymire. Get seated. As everyone knows, and this is another project that predates us, many of us sitting here, but this was a project that was approved by the board through various resolutions with three, Nathan, if you wouldn't mind zooming in on that, please, three grants, two through DCED and one through PennDOT, and they were multimodal grants. The motion this evening is for one of those DCED grants. And as soon as we zoom, I'll talk about what that is. But the first grant was for acquisition of several parcels, the demolition of the same, and the engineering of transportation and traffic improvements at Old York-Susquehanna. Okay. So, I know it may be difficult to read, but the properties 1100, 1102, 1104, 1204, those properties have already been acquired through this grant, and 1907 is yet to be The grant funds also have dollars available for demolition and engineering design. Because this grant expires June 30 of this year, in order to be able to continue to move forward with this and the other grant, there's two others, but in particular this grant, we need to get an extension to June 30 and give a revised budget and revised plan of next steps. That revised budget and revised plan are not yet complete, but we know we can move forward with demolishing the pieces, those four properties as well as acquired 1907. What this will be, what this DCD1 grant will do, combined with the transportation grant from PennDOT, next one, please, Tara. Will be those traffic improvements that you could see in light blue in the hashes. So, in order to move forward with this project, we have to extend this by one year. So, it's a reestablishment and affirmation that we want to extend this and continue with this portion of the plan. We have yet to use or execute the agreement with PennDOT for the remaining money that will take us up to 1.4 million to complete all of these projects, but we can't do anything about this because we'll never be able to complete all of this work by June 30 of this year, which is why we're asking for next year.
So, can you kind of project out what you think a timeframe is for actually getting to the point of constructing the traffic improvements?
Difficult to give an exact time, but I will tell you this. We need to acquire or make some sort of determination on 1907 because that's really a critical acquisition in order to begin moving forward with that corner and any work on that corner, and that's what I was referring to earlier. We now have updated numbers on demolition. We now have updated numbers on these improvements that all fall within the total dollars of what was budgeted with the two grants, but we don't have a Gantt chart, for example. We don't have a projected timeline on all of them because we really need to know how we're going to proceed with that one property we still don't have.
Will you expend those, will you expend those funds within the year extension?
We're going to have to try to find a way to do at least what was required under this grant by June 30 of 2020.
The traffic improvements and the demolition?
Which is the engineering design, the demolition, and begin the design of the traffic improvements, the multimodal grant. And we really need to move forward on all of this because if we don't continue to move forward, that other monies that we got from PennDOT will be taken back. So, we're really working to try to figure that out right now.
And what's the expiration date on that grant?
There isn't any. We haven't even executed a contract. It was, it was monies that was frankly a governor assignment through the Secretary of Transportation several years ago.
Right.
But it can be removed and taken back at any time if they don't see any progress or movement. So, I will say that Commissioners Spiegelman and Commissioner Vahy have been working very diligently with Doug Callantine of the Economic Development Committee to try to figure out what is the best way to move this forward, and we're just not there yet. But this is step one.
I mean, this is a traffic improvement project. I mean, it's still not an economic development driver.
I understand.
So, the sooner we can get to a schedule, the sooner we can implement this and expend the funds that we've been granted and move past this project. I mean, there's no, I just, okay.
Could I ask a question?
1907 is critical to coming up with any timeline.
And what is the situation? What is the situation with 1907? I mean, where are you with that?
Immediately, we need to...
You have the others, but where are, what's the status?
I would defer to Commissioner Spiegelman because he's been actively involved in that particular parcel for some time, but our next immediate step is to have another appraisal done on that.
That was exactly what I was about to say. We're going to have another appraisal done and...
But you're saying another? What was the matter? You must have had a first one.
The first one was done a long time ago. It's kind of stale.
Did you get an answer, Carol? Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Any from staff? Any questions from residents? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes...
It concludes the business of the Public Affairs Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Finance Committee, Vice President Stephen Klein, Chair, is next.
Thank you, President Luker. The Treasurer's report is available for anybody in the public that would like to view it from the manager's office. The Treasurer, Jay Blumenthal, was not able to attend this evening. We have one order, we have one piece of business, motion to approve the February expenditures in the amount of $2,227,804.84 in salaries and wages in the amount of $1,938,262.63.5 and authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of May 2019, and I assume move.
It's been moved to second it. Maybe we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. That completes the Finance Committee's agenda. Thank you, Vice President Klein. That concludes our formal agenda for this evening, so at this time, I'd like to take public comment. Name and address, and please adhere to our three-minute speaking rule. Thank you.
Actually, your three-minute speaking rule would have been, I thought, for each of the different committees, there is usually three minutes. And when the committees are not there, which is one of my questions, one of the questions I had was why the public was not given a reason why those meetings were canceled. So, can I ask a reason why the committee meetings were canceled?
Manager, Manfredi?
Because there was no business to conduct that evening, and the manager was having discussions with various members. It's very simple.
So, did they have a separate meeting?
No, no.
No. So, you didn't have any meeting with a quorum?
That is correct.
Okay. So, when you cancel meetings like that, can you please give a reason why you are canceling them so that the public has some idea? There was a great deal of flurry of emails trying to figure out what was happening and why. So, the other thing is, I'm pretty sure that nobody in this room believes that all of the commissioners use the Abington.org email. In fact, some commissioners, I don't think I've ever seen an Abington.org email. And I have written to Mr. Manfredi with great distress to see that, under oath, someone apparently tried to mislead and suggest that the commissioners have all been told to use their Abington.org emails, when in fact, they know for a fact that that's not true. And that was a direct attempt to mislead somebody in a, in a very important situation. I wrote to Mr. Manfredi. I got no response. I wrote to Mr. Manfredi again and asked, please, just to respond to let me know that he received the email and have that much of a courtesy. I got no response. I wrote again today and got no response again. So, that in and of itself is problematic. What happened under oath is problematic, and we have a series of things in this township that are problematic. And we have a series of things in this township that are problematic. And as I said to you last time, I think, you know, I mentioned that from the smallest things, even the accommodation of a plug for the camera, we have now been told that we may no longer sit in that corner, which was the best corner for the ability to film, the ability to hear.
Can we move to a subject that's pertinent to the public?
This is very pertinent. This is very pertinent. When residents have been coming here for 13 years on their own time and filming virtually every meeting, the reason they had to be filmed was because brownouts, blackouts, microphone dropouts, which are happening again. They just started again. We stopped them by filming every meeting and saying, did you miss the microphone? That's okay, we have the audio. Okay? So that is exactly the shenanigans that 13 years ago we started with and tried to put an end to, and it started again. Obviously, the two people sitting in that corner, easily there are chairs here and accommodations could be made for that corner to be available so that the camera is not somewhere where somebody would trip over it, and so that the hearing problem that I have and that the camera has can be accommodated.
You've already exceeded the three minutes. You're on four, working on five.
Right.
Could you wrap it up, please?
And had there been committee meetings, there would have been time for each of these subjects to be dealt with.
Well, you would give an opportunity to speak as the meeting progressed, but you refused or did not choose to do so, so could you wrap it up, please?
Okay. So the last two things, again, with accommodation for residents, I'm asking if you could please find either, again, a portable computer that is stationary so that the top can go down because people can't see past this, or an arm that folds down. And the last thing is, again, even though I've mentioned it over and over again, the directions for speaking do not match the ordinance that has been passed, the resolution that was passed for public speaking. I've asked to have that corrected, okay? In your directions, you suggest that people can ask questions, and I appreciate that you answered the questions tonight. That's how things should be, okay? But that's not okay to have that so somebody who doesn't know that they may ask questions has just been told that they can't.
Okay.
So those are small and large things.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? If there are none, we'll start with closing, before we start with closing comments, Mayor Freddie, Mr. Manfredi, you have a comment?
Yes, President Luker. I just want the commissioners to know that I specifically asked Ms. Castorina to call Ms. Lehman this evening before the meeting to let her know that, and she uses the word accommodation, she said she wanted a place to plug in. So we removed the chairs from the back against the wall where there is a plug so she can set up her camera there and plug in, as she has asked for years.
Ms. Lehman, Ms. Lehman, Ms. Lehman.
I just want to say, I told him at the last meeting that didn't work.
Ms. Lehman, please sit down. Ms. Lehman, please sit down. You're out of order. Mr. Manfredi.
So that is an accommodation, and also that there is a speaker right above those seats where these meetings are broadcast, and so you can sit under a speaker as well. So in terms of the term accommodation, although it may not be acceptable, it's not that we did not try to make an accommodation.
Thank you for that enough for the accommodation subject. Ms. Lehman, thank you. We'll have closing comments from commissioners at this time. Commissioners Zappone, we'll start with you.
Tomorrow night, Friday night, is our artsy community association's seventh annual Designer Bag Bingo at the VFW, and the doors will be opening at 6:00 PM. We've been sold out for a week now. And on Sunday is our sixth annual Breakfast with the Easter Bunny and Egg Hunt at the VFW starting at nine o'clock. I think it runs nine to noon. And don't forget the run for the parade on Saturday, the 13th.
Saturday morning?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillespie.
So I'll just keep going with Keep the Parade Running. Saturday morning, everyone starts off at 8:00 AM, so they have to be there by about 7:30. We have a really large group coming, and it's Keep the Parade Running. It's our eighth annual, and it is in memory of my husband, Michael Gillespie, who actually really kept that parade running about 28 years ago when it was starting to get very small. So hopefully, you can still sign up. You can sign up tomorrow night, 6:00 to 8:00 at the VFW. There will be people there in a different area than the bingo and/or on Saturday morning early. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vehe.
I'll echo the support for the Keep Parade Running 5K. I will be out there sweating on the hills of Glen Side. I want to congratulate Deputy Chief Kelly Warner for her achievement. She was recently recognized by the Mid-Atlantic Association of Women in Law Enforcement as with a Lifetime Achievement Award. Very well deserved, and congratulations. And lastly, I want to announce the Chesapeake Village Spring Fling is going to be on April 28th, 2019, starting at 4:00 PM. Please come out and support our local small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ditto on the kudos to Deputy Chief Warner on her outstanding and absolutely well-deserved honor. I want to remind everybody that primary election day is coming up. It is going to be Tuesday, May 21st, and the deadline to register to vote is also coming up. That is April 22nd, and you can register to vote at register.votespa.com. And I wanted to send out a special notice, one that is going to, you're going to see in my newsletter, it's going to come in the mail and through various other means, to good folks like Daniel Kaye, the other people who live in precinct number three of Ward 11, the folks who vote at the senior high. You will not be voting at the senior high anytime soon due to the construction, the expansion and renovation project. Your polling place is being moved to the gymnasium of the junior high, 2056 Susquehanna Road. As I said, I'm going to be sending out a mailer about this, putting this in the newsletter, but please make a note now, polling place for 113 is Junior High Gym. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Carswell.
On Monday, April 22nd, we're celebrating Earth Day in Roychester Park, casual and ready to pull out invasive species. It's kid-friendly, and there will be lunch provided thanks to the volunteers of the EAC. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber.
Thank you. A couple of my colleagues did mention Deputy Chief's, Kelly Warner's, award. We will be recognizing her in the public safety meeting. Chief Pat Moy wanted to be here for that, so next month, that award will be spoken about a little bit more. I also want to mention that if you didn't have an opportunity to see the new voting machines, they will be at Arcadia. It's in May, I forget the exact date, maybe somebody-
I think it's May 6th.
I was going to say, yeah. It is a good idea to go see them. I went to the demonstration at Ambler. It's not hard to do, but it is a change, and it is going to be a little bit confusing. It's a paper ballot that you kind of color it in like you would SATs-type thing, and then you run it through a machine so that you don't have a lot of confusion at your polling place on election day. You may want to check that out in one of the upcoming, there's, I think, three different days around the county, but the closes will be at Arcadia. Thank you.
That is May 6th at 7:00 PM at Arcadia.
May 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. I'd like to make everybody aware of a marijuana and vaping awareness event. It will be held Monday, April 22nd, at the North Penn VFW at 7:00 PM. Our presenter is a professor and former DEA agent, and our moderator will be retired Chief John Livinggood. It will be a community-wide event, and I encourage everyone who is like me and does not know all about this to come to this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Broski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Short and sweet, no comment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew Wofford.
There's an event that I'm going to read off of the webpage about so I get it accurate. It's Sunday, April 28th, 2019, at Alverthorpe Park. It's the Second Annual Pixie Dust Wishes Festival of Wishes. It's a run-walk food truck festival, and it's in memory of Dylan Singer. The mission is to raise money that helps Disney trips for individuals with disabilities and special needs throughout Pennsylvania. It's a great event, so put that on your calendar, and I hope to see you there. Thank you to everybody who came to the Easter egg hunt over at Alverthorpe Park. I hope they, every kid enjoyed the three minutes of running out there and then running to the car. It's super exciting, and all kidding aside, it really is a great event. So next year, if anybody watching this has 28 free minutes, that will include your travel to the park, parking, waiting for about 22 minutes, and then three minutes of getting and then three minutes back to the car. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Diplosito.
Thank you, President Luker. Baseball season is in full effect, so that means that our children and our teenagers are going to be walking to the parks, to the sandlots, and they're going to be carrying big, heavy bags, and they probably aren't going to be able to see you if you're traveling too fast through crosswalks and things like that. So when driving through Abington Township, please drive like your kids live here. Thank you, President Luker.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Weinberg.
No comment tonight. Thank you, President Luker.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Michael Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just reiterating the proclamation that was read earlier, we'd love to have everybody join us at North Hills, at the Dockerty Park, I'm sorry, North Hills and Dockerty Park are right next to one another, on Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM in observance of Arbor Day. If you don't know where that is, it's just off Limecomb Pike between Central Ave and Tennis Avenue. So please come out and join us for that. There's a great playground there. It's a great place for kids, so please come on out. Also, just a big shout-out to the Environmental Advisory Council for getting some recognition, the USGBC's latest quarterly magazine that went out this quarter. Abington Township was recognized as one of 87 municipalities in the world that is Lead for City and Community certified, which is quite an accomplishment for us. So thanks to the AEC for that one.
Thank you, sir. Vice President Klein.
Thank you, President Luker. As many, some people might be aware, there's a traveling exhibit going on in the state of Pennsylvania about the efforts among local and county governmental entities to pass nondiscrimination ordinances. It's currently, I think, still up at the State House or State Capitol Building, and hopefully will come to Montgomery County soon. And I would want to give a shout-out to Commissioner Schreiber, as she is prominently recognized in that exhibit for her courageous efforts to bring a nondiscrimination ordinance to Abington. As many might know, there are still those exposed groups in our society that are still discriminated against because of their lifestyle, and the stand that we took in Montgomery, in Abington, was a step in the right direction, as hopefully that will change the minds in the state to change the nondiscrimination law in the state of Pennsylvania as it waves through the state of Pennsylvania. And it's still amazing to me that people would vote against a nondiscrimination ordinance, so I congratulate Lori on being recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Lori. I just have two things before we close for the evening. The first, I was a little delinquent in reporting this the last two meetings, but there was a news release from the Government Finance Officers Association that the township of Abington has received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. So I wanted to thank our financial department for their longstanding, this is about, what, how many years has this been accomplished?
15.
15 years in a row. So thank you very much for our finance department. And lastly, I was honored to participate in a Student Government Day program today hosted by Abington Township for seniors at Abington High School. I was in the first hour of the, the first leg of the day activity with State Representative Aron Ben Sanchez, myself, and Ashley, our communications specialist. And I just wanted to give Ashley special recognition for making State Representative Ben Sanchez's and my job a lot easier by presenting a PowerPoint presentation to the students at Abington High School. It was very informative. It kept them engaged in the conversation, and it made our jobs a lot easier, and it made it, to me, more enhancing to the students to see something on the screen and they could relate to it, so it was much appreciated. And all the way through the rest of the day, down to our manager, Mayor Freddie, Richard Manfredi, and also our, one of our judicial people, Anita Price, I think, was involved. So I want to thank all the department heads who hosted the students from Abington Township. So if there's no further business, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much for attending, and have a good evening.